Let's go and begin this work-study session. The first order of business will be the equivalent of the study session summary minutes of the February 13th, 2013 meeting. Do you have a motion?
I don't have a motion.
Do you have a motion in a second? Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes opposed, no, that carries. Next, we are on item B, the police task force recommendations. That's OC 14-2. And we will allow the Chairman of that committee, Mr. Lippman, to please come forward and make a presentation.
Thank you. If you will, the best thing to do would be to, and I believe you have them in front of you, pull out the recommendations. Because I'm basically going to take you through them, recommendation by recommendation.
And for the record, we will allow you 20 minutes to make a presentation, and then we will open it up for questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. As you know from a couple of letters, spent about six months on this project. Reviewing materials from all over the city, and in fact, all over the country. We came up with a set statement of principles, which is intended to guide your work, which I'm not going to go through today, you can read that. I also wanted to tell you that we came up with 18 total recommendations, that were divided up into four different goals. The goals, broadly speaking, were intended to address what we found as systemic problems within the system, the civilian police oversight system. The first one had to do with the POC, or the Civilian Oversight Agency, being independent. In our research and in our hearings, we heard that there were problems with that, that there were a lack of clarity about supervision, that there were overlapping activities between the POC and the Police Force, Internal Affairs Unit. Some of the reports were validated by the Police Chief before they were turned over to the POC. And cases that were civilian complaints, when there was overflow, were being investigated by Independent Affairs. So, we wanted to make sure that we set up an entity that was independent of anything else under the city government. The second broad area were to broaden the powers of the agency and make them clearly defined. Again, what we found was that the agency didn't have enough powers to do the work that it needed to do, and its powers were not clearly defined. In fact, there was some disagreement amongst members of the POC, and an opinion that was later handed down by the City Attorney's Office, that were kind of in conflict with each other, and didn't clearly identify what their powers were. The third area has to do with a diverse and balanced agency, made up of people who broadly represent our community. So, we wanted to ensure that. And the last one is better and broader outreach. Many people in the community kept hearing, didn't understand the citizen complaint process, didn't know about it, those kinds of things. So, we wanted to make sure that those were addressed. So, those were the four broad areas, and they're reflected in the goals, and why we came up with recommendations to address those problems. So, let me start with goal one. The civilian police oversight process will have a greater level of independence. And if you can follow along with me, I think that would be very helpful. So, under goal one, item one, number one. Mediation should be the first option for resolution of citizen police complaints. Mediation services should be obtained from entities outside of city government. Mediators should be independent over the oversight body and APD, and should not be informer employees of APD. We felt that a lot more mediation probably would have taken place, had it been promoted more, and had the mediator not been a police officer. So, we wanted to ensure going forward that that was not the case, that the mediator, mediators brought in would be outside independent parties, and that the better promoted mediation. Many of citizen complaints could be resolved by mediation, we believe. Number two, the civilian police oversight process should be structured as a quasi-public individual. What's meant by that is that although it's a public agency, in the sense that it's made up of people from the public, citizens from the public, we also wanted it to function fairly independently. So, that's why it's quasi-public. Also, although it's, again, it's public, it operates under the auspices of the city. In the case of the system that we're promoting, or that we're recommending, operates under the authority of City Council. So, A, the civilian police oversight agency will be responsible for the full range of civilian oversight of police, from investigation of individual citizen police complaints through policy formulation. The agency will employ sufficient staff to carry out these functions. This lays out the broad range of functions that we think the civilian oversight agency should be involved with. So, everything from, as it says here, the investigation of individual cases, through policy formulation, making recommendations for policy changes. B, the agency will administer its own budget and supervise its own staff, in compliance with the city's merit ordinance and contractual service policies and procedures. This is intended to make clear that the employees that operate under the civilian oversight agency are employees of that agency, not employees of the city government or any other entity. Again, that's a, there's a lack of clarity there with today. The way it is today, I believe the independent review officer ultimately answers to the CIO. And wanted to be independent and supervised by people who are running the civilian oversight agency. The agency should be permitted to retain or employ an attorney to provide legal advice and to advocate for agency positions before other branches of city government. This is a direct reaction to what happened this past year with the City Attorney's Office and the POC, and there being discrepancy between the two. So, we felt that the civilian agency should have the ability to retain its own attorney to interpret things for the agency itself, not dependent on someone else's interpretation, who may be, there may be a conflict of interest. Number three. Now, to me, number three, this is an editorial comment on my part, although I would think that most of the members of the task force would agree with this. In terms of creating an independent entity, this is probably the single most important thing. The civilian police oversight agency should have a dedicated and independent source of funding. As you all know, funding can be a powerful tool for controlling any entity. So, if it's under someone's department budget, it can be expanded or retracted, depending on how that budget is written. So, we're recommending that it have a dedicated and independent source of funding. The A and B under there are funding will be determined, this is a suggestion, funding will be determined by a specific metric. For example, an amount equal to a percentage of the total APD budget, or a per capita amount per police officer. But what this means is not taking, you know, once the APD budget is made, not taking something from the APD budget necessarily, but an amount equal to, let's say, I'll throw out a number of 1 percent. APD has a very large budget, 1 percent, you know, could be like a million dollars to fund the civilian oversight program. And it should be tied to a metric like that. If it's a police force with a very big budget, the civilian oversight should have a big budget. So, it can correspond if it's a percentage. Same thing with police officers, if you tie it to the number of officers, the larger the police force, then the more money the civilian oversight agency should have. Item four, the citizen police complaint findings should not be released to APD prior to finalization by the agency. I've already mentioned this, this is something that was being done currently. The report was being checked with the Police Chief before it was turned over to the civilian oversight. Okay, goal two. This has to do, as I said earlier, with broader and clearer authority. So, goal two, the civilian police oversight agency should be invested with clearly defined and broader authority. Recommendations, number five. The civilian police oversight agency should have the authority to recommend officer disciplinary action from the chart of sanctions for sustained police complaints. Chief of APD must respond in writing if a recommended disciplinary action is not imposed. This gives citizens, particularly those who are filing complaints, some avenue for feeling like they've been served, some avenue for knowing, well, since this complaint was sustained, and I was done wrongly, well, what's going to happen to the police officer? So, we're giving the authority to the civilian agency to recommend an action from the police, from their chart of sanctions, and asking, the final decision still would rest with the Police Chief, but asking the Chief to respond if he doesn't concur in the same sanction. Number six, the civilian police oversight agency should have the authority to recommend changes to APD policy, training, programs, and procedures. The Chief of APD must respond in writing to the recommendations, indicating which recommendations will be followed, and providing an explanation for those that will not be followed. This is the authority given, that we're recommending that the civilian agency have, to recommend policy changes. It shouldn't just be bogged down in individual complaints, but over time, they should be studying trends and analysis, and make policy recommendations to the police, or to the City Council, for changes that would better serve the public. And we're asking, again, that if those recommendations aren't followed, that there be a report back why they weren't followed. Number seven, the civilian police oversight agency should have greater access to civilian complaints, court complaints, and Internal Affairs case data. We heard this over and over again, and I can tell you from the national conference that I attended, I heard it over and over again there as well. The more openness, the more information, the better. Sunshine is the best disinfectant for harmless any problems that you have. And in order for there to be a well-run civilian oversight agency, they need to have access to all of the information, in order to make good judgments. And the A under there is this will allow greater analysis and understanding of trend data to support recommended policy changes. If you don't have the data, you can't, enough data, you can't look for trends and make recommendations. So, having access to a broad range of data supports the ability of the agency to make policy recommendations. Number eight, the civilian police oversight agency should periodically audit individual citizen complaints, and act as an appeal body for all citizen police complaints. A, the agency shall have access to full investigative files, including statements of witnesses and police officers. And B, the agency shall have the authority to subpoena documents and witnesses and take testimony under oath. At first, this may seem like a very broad kind of thing, but particularly the ability to subpoena and take testimony under oath. But there's a lot of precedent for this, for citizens calling in people, to have them testify under oath and subpoena them, and you need only to look at the U.S. Congress and their congressional hearings, when they bring people in to testify. It's the same kind of thing. The civilian oversight body has got to have the power to access all of the records and testimony they need to get in order to make good decisions, particularly in the case of individual cases. Number nine, the length of time that citizens have to file citizen police complaints from date of incident should be increased to 120 days. I think it's 90 days now. And the reason to increase it to 120 days, in more serious complaints, citizen complaints, where the citizen may have been injured, they're in the hospital, they need more time in order to find out what they need to do and file a complaint. So, we're just asking that it be increased. Number 10, all complaints about direct civilian officer interaction should be routed to the civilian police oversight agency regardless of source. All internal APD complaints not relating to civilian officer interaction will be handled in accordance with APD policy. This is intended to lay out a clear set of duties and responsibilities. All citizen complaints go to the citizen complaint entity, and all internal things involving APD policy go to APD, be handled internally. There's crossover now, there's some citizen complaints that are being investigated by Internal Affairs. We really can't have that, and we're also saying that regardless of source. The way it is now, it has to be the harmed person that files the complaint. Well, sometimes there's a bystander standing right there, watching the whole thing. Sometimes it doesn't get to, doesn't get to the civilian oversight body and goes straight to the courts. So, what we're saying is regardless of the source, whether it comes from a court or it comes from a bystander, it can still be filed as a citizen complaint. And we heard this time and time again, people came up and testified that they saw someone, you know, getting beat up, et cetera, et cetera, but they couldn't file the complaint. So, we wanted to open that up. Goal three. All of the next things are involved with being a credible and balanced agency. Goal three says, the Board of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency should be broadly representative of the entire community, and should be balanced geographically and demographically, and with respect to the stakeholders of the police oversight process. The Board will collectively have a broad range of skills, backgrounds, and experience. We tried to put into the goal, everything that we were looking for, in terms of it being a broad-based entity reflecting the whole community. So, we made sure to put in things like balanced geographically and demographically. And the demographically was added by intent, to reflect the demographics of our community, ethnic, gender, et cetera. Recommendations, number 11. The Board of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency should consist of nine members selected at large. There are two things being said here, we left the number at nine, we played with other numbers, we talked about 11, we talked about seven, but through testimony, we found that nine was really probably the best number, because you don't, not everybody comes to every meeting, et cetera, and we wanted a sufficient number of people there. We also made them all selected at large, meaning there weren't any specific categories. Number 12, civilian police oversight agency board members should serve a maximum of two, three-year terms on a staggered basis. I don't think that needs much explanation, it's pretty self-evident. Number 13, civilian police oversight agency board members should be selected through the following process. Now, a lot of thought went into this. How should they be selected? Because that will determine whether or not the public and people in general see it as a fair process that was done independently. So, this is the process. A, the City Council will form a selection committee of five members, and five, the number five was picked specifically, so that it wouldn't be nine, so that each of you would appoint a person to this body. Five members who are not city-elected officials or city employees. When the task force was chosen, a lot of input was from council staff, and there was noise in the community about that. So, we wanted to make sure that these are, that this committee, if this is what you do, that does the selecting, comes from people in the community. And not only that, but it's a decision that you will have to have arrived at through your own debate and discussion, because it's less than nine. B, the selection process will establish a well-publicized, fair, and equitable application process. So, these are not people who would be, well, they would ultimately be appointed, but they have to apply to a process to serve on this body. The selection committee will evaluate respective board members according to the following minimum standards. One, residency within Albuquerque city limits. Two, successfully pass a background check. Three, personal history lacking any pattern of unsubstantiated complaints against APD. And four, having the demonstrated ability to engage in mature impartial decision-making. D, the selection committee will submit their recommendations for board membership to the City Council for approval. E, no member of the police oversight task force, or the current police oversight commission shall be appointed to the first board of the new civilian police oversight agency. This is put in there to avoid any conflict of interest from the task force or the current commission. Number 14. Upon select, oh, let me say this about the next two, 14 and 15, are both intended to fairly significantly expand the amount and the kind of training that board members of this agency would have to undergo. Again, it's something we heard, particularly from the police side, that these people are deciding on things that we're doing, and they don't know what we do, and they don't understand what we do. So, we wanted to make sure that we put, regardless of their background and what skills they may have coming to the table, that they're put through a training program that will ensure that they're knowledgeable about the issues they're going to hear about. So, I'll start with 14. Upon selection, civilian police oversight agency board members will complete an orientation program consisting of the following. A, attendance at board meetings. We would like them, if possible, not this first time around, but in future years, for someone who has applied and wants to serve, has been selected, to go and see what a board meeting is like, what it looks like. B, becoming familiar with agency policies and procedures, that's self-evident, know what it is that you're getting into. And C, failure to complete the orientation program will result in not being appointed to the board. So, these first two things are before you get your final appointment. This is just to make sure, go look at a board meeting, look at the policies and procedures, make sure you still want to do this. So, that's an orientation. Number 15 is the training. Fifteen, all civilian police oversight agency board members should complete a specific training program, which shall consist of the following. A, completion of the APD civilian police academy. B, civil rights training or anti-racism training. C, a specific number of APD ride-alongs. D, annual firearms simulation training, the FATS training, internal affairs training, periodic additional training programs. And G, board members are also encouraged to attend national conferences and workshops relating to police oversight, such as the annual NAICOL conference at City Expanse. And I would highly recommend that NAICOL conference, I think everyone that serves on this should go to that. Failure to comply with the training requirements may result in dismissal from the board. This is very important. You all know, as far as I know, there are no checks on the training that people have to undergo now. We want to make sure that they go through the training and that they complete it. So, there's a sanction if you don't. Goal four. Goal four is all around creating better and broader outreach, and creating a new identity, a new branding, if you will. So, goal four, the civilian police oversight agency will develop and implement a program of community outreach, with the intent of reaching a broader sector of the community. Recommendations, number 16, civilian police oversight agency will report on its community outreach efforts to the City Council on a semi-annual basis. This holds their feet to the fire, they have to report to you twice a year, so they've got to tell you what they're doing to promote it in the community. Seventeen, the Board of the Civilian Police Oversight Agency shall be given a new name to reflect the changes recommended. This is the branding thing. We think you should change the name from Police Oversight Commission to something else. Eighteen, citizens should be provided with adequate notice when their citizen police complaint will be heard by the agency. Those are our recommendations. Before I close out, I just want to say one more thing, and I'm going to pull out a short paragraph from the cover letter that we sent you, so I want to make sure that it goes on the record and is heard. The task force respectfully requests a response from City Council regarding our recommendations. We are very interested to know how the City Council intends to proceed. Specifically, we would like to know which recommendations will be implemented, and what changes will be made to the police oversight ordinance. We also suggest that at an appropriate time, the City Council inform the community about these changes through a formal public hearing process. That's my report, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Mr. President, could you please introduce the members of the commission that are here? Just, we really do appreciate their work.
Oh, let them introduce themselves, why don't we start over here?
Peter Simonson with ACLU.
Nancy Canitzberg, Disability Rights New Mexico.
Ralph Arianas, I'm the State Director of New Mexico LUAC, and Chairman of Hispanic Brown People.
Alan Wegman, Public Defender.
Frank Starkey, just a resident of Albuquerque.
Gabrieta Berthold, resident.
Well, I just want to thank you all very much for serving us, very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lippman? Counselor Bennett?
Mr. Lippman, as I understand it, these are unanimous recommendations.
Yes, I meant to say that upfront. Thank you. All but three of the 18 were unanimous.
Okay. And, so, would you be willing to say which three were not completely unanimous?
I don't think that would be particularly helpful.
Okay, but, but...
I think it's public record, though.
All right, so that isn't a public record, but most of these were unanimous recommendations.
All, so, 15 of them are unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
15 of the 18.
Counselor Gordon.
Thanks, Mr. President, Mr. Lippman. I've gone through the recommendations, and we've had an opportunity to talk in a real casual way. But one of the things that came to mind when these were presented, is that some of these recommendations ask for funding, ask for staffing, ask for things that really, I don't know that this body is able to come up with money like that, and I don't even know what the amount would be. I know you talked about 1 percent of, you know, police budget, or whatever the amounts are. And I think it deserves staffing, but it also speaks to a stipend for members of the task force. There's some recommendations.
I don't remember reading that. I know we talked about it, I don't think it came through as a final recommendation.
Yes, it did.
Did I skip something?
Yeah.
Did I skip a whole goal? What did I miss?
3B, if legally possible, members of the newly formed civilian police oversight board will receive a stipend compensation.
Sorry, I missed it.
But will not be that eligible for city benefits.
Right, okay, sorry, I skipped.
The reason I bring that up is that it would be a very confusing issue, I think.
Right.
For the kind of setup that we have now for volunteers, and I think this is, it's a volunteer board. We would then have to revisit, you know, Open Space Commission, Arts Board, I mean, everyone else that does a lot of hard work, very appreciated, but it would be quite expensive if we were to go back to that. And I don't know how we would come up with, for instance, I think that we pay the councils too much, but...
Some of us.
Of course, they're volunteer board, but you get what I'm saying, that if we go back and...
I understand. We spoke about this one, you won't get ahead.
And I don't know how many more commissions we have at this point, I think there's like 15 or 16, of which, there's anywhere from five members to 15 or 21 members. And you can see that if that then becomes a, you win a $10,000 stipend a year, as Everett Dirson used to say, we're speaking big money now. And it's something that I think we have to be careful, that, or does volunteerism comes in, and what are we doing to that? So, that's one of the things that I, that I wanted to make sure, we discussed it, and we understood what it meant, in a protracted sense. Now, you talked about the agency, it should have a dedicated and independent source of funding, and I'm not... And I'm not sure, I mean, I'm still on that. I'm not sure what you mean by outside source of funding, fundraising?
No.
Tragedy?
No. And this gets into a technical thing that I'm not knowledgeable enough to answer. I'm sure staff can answer that question. But before they do, say how it could be done, let me make sure you understand what it is I'm saying. I thought I made this clear when I explained that during my presentation. What we're talking about is timing to a metric, its relevance in the size of the police department. So be it a 1%, a very small percentage of their entire budget, or so much calculated based on the number of officers, so much per officer, but intended to come from another source. And staff will ask that.
Mr. President, Counselors, I think the task force intended that to mean that instead of having the independent review office and the POC be funded, currently it's under the chief administrative officer's budget program line. And to actually remove that and treat it as its own department and program under the budget. So there are suggestions of certain percentage, for example, 1%. APD's budget is currently about $153 million. So 1% of that would be about $1.5 million to be used for the agency. And so it's not under the influence of the chief administrative officer or any other department or program budget line.
And I don't want to get too hung up on the little specifics of that. But when we talk about that, then it would have to have some tracing, some place that it resides.
Right.
You know, we can't sort of say 1.5 million will be put somewhere and then people go over there and help themselves and they have no...
No, no, it would be treated just like the council's budget, say Parks and Recreation, different budget lines. It would be its own section of the budget, if you will.
But mainly I wanted to establish the fact that outside, independent, kind of threw me for a loop there. And I have a few other questions, Mr. President, I don't know if you have any other, folks.
Let's go to Counselor Gibson and then we'll go back to you.
By the way, this is done in other communities where it's tied to a metric and it comes out of tax funding, the revenue that the city brings in.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I think that's a good way to fund something like data, based on, you know, either the size of the police department or the budget or something like that. But I'm just kind of curious, what is the budget now for the POC? Does anybody have that?
I think it's about $600,000. It's about $480,000, independent review office, we see the question, the CAO. And the POC uses that for some travel, comes out of that. Mostly it's funded through the independent review office.
Okay. And the bulk of that, except for travel expenses, this does by your investigation work, is that correct?
That's correct. Mostly salaries for the six full-time city employees.
All right, so here's what I'm getting to. The increase in budget, and I don't really think that that's the issue here. But it sounds like, after reading this, would be intended for investigatory duties that the POC would take on.
So, let me explain. The kind of agency that we're recommending is going to require an expansion in funding and staff. Already, you can see with the 1% example, there's a significant increase with the funding. And probably that 1%, you know, could be arranged for if you so decided that way. And it would keep it independent of anybody's ability to monkey with that amount of money because it's tied to a metric. Now, where would the money go? In addition to already needing another investigator, which will tell you that, we're asking that the agency also recommend policy changes. So they're going to need analysts as well, who can look at data and make analysis and help formulate policy recommendations. So we want this to become a much more significant agency than it is now. And in addition to doing investigations, which she doesn't have enough to do now, that's why some of the cases are going to IA, we're going to need analysts that can help with policy formulation and have the data to back up those recommendations. So that's why we need more money and more staff for this agency.
Okay, so just for clarification then, the investigators would work for the new agency?
Yes.
Okay. And would that include the IRO now?
It would include whatever staff the agency itself decided they would need. I would assume they would need probably a principal investigator or something like that. And a review officer, whatever they decide to call it, investigators and analysts.
So then there would be the IRO, as we know the IRO and her staff, as well as the new agency, you know, and...
No, they'll all be the same thing.
All the same thing.
They'll all be part of the same agency. In other words, the IRO, if you think of it, let's say we didn't change that part of things. The IRO would then shift, instead of being supervised, and the budget coming from the CAO's office would have its own independent budget, the way Stephanie explained it, and would be responsible to this new agency. With its own budget and staff.
Again, again, though, there would be the new agency.
Right.
And then there would be the existing IRO and her staff, and then whatever.
No, the existing IRO, okay. The existing IRO and her staff would become an employee of the new agency.
Isn't that what I just said?
Well, it sounded like you were saying they were separate. That's why.
No, no, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, yes, that's correct.
So why do we need, if we already have an investigative arm, why do we need another one?
Because the way it's currently structured, there's great confusion on the part of who the IRO answers to and who supervises the IRO. Her budget comes from the chief administrative officer's budget. And ultimately, in the opinion of the city attorney, that's who she reports to. So what we're saying is we want to move it out of city administration. It's a conflict of interest into an independent agency. So if we were to leave the existing, you created a new agency and you still had the same existing staff, they would just shift over to the new agency. They wouldn't report to the CAO.
Counselor Vice President Jones, and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we have an operational issue here. As you're saying, if there's really no one in charge. I don't think we have anything in the city that gets funded that works that way. They have to report to a director. So are you suggesting that perhaps we set up another department with a director? Someone has to be in charge. It can't be a committee. So who is going to, who is going to be in charge? Because someone has to answer to the money and how it's spent. And I don't think it can be the commission or the committee.
I understand.
How do you see this being organized? What's the organizational chart?
Let me answer you this way. First of all, let me explain that our intent was not to write a new ordinance. So we didn't write everything into here that you're going to have to later figure out. Some of the things like question about where does the money come from? And your question now about who do they answer to? Those kinds of things will have to ultimately be written into an ordinance. But the way we envision it is it operates under the authority of the city council. Now, whether council hires a director that runs this agency and the director reports to city council, I don't know. Those are the kinds of things that are going to have to go into an ordinance and get into the kinds of specifics that y'all are going to have to work out. We did think about those things, but we're not empowered to do that. We were only asked to come up with recommendations. So our recommendation is that it be independent and that it have its own staff and budget. And there are ways to do that. But you have to figure out, you're going to have to figure out the specifics of that.
Mr. President, if I may, that sounds good. But the city of Albuquerque, I'm confident, is not going to give money to a committee that does not answer to someone within the city of Albuquerque. Therefore, the committee will never be the ultimate one who runs this. There has to be a director, an IRO, it has to be someone who is ultimately responsible. And they have to answer to someone within the city because we can't just dismiss it for a million and five. And so I think we have a lot of details here. It sounds put in the big picture, but I don't know that that's something that can necessarily be worked out in a government-type of situation. But I appreciate where you're trying to go with this.
With all due respect, I can tell you that in other cities, they have such an arrangement. They have a budget that's tied to a metric, and they have a director that runs the agency.
That's the question, you have a director.
And I don't know what the reporting structure is, but that, again, these are things that we're not empowered to do anyway.
So would you, Mr. President?
Unproceed.
Thank you. So would you see this as another department, or they director? And therefore, that director, here's the key, that director will have to be an appointee or an elected official. It can't just be an independent person. It has to be someone who is working with city money and running this. So that director, no matter what you want to call it, whether you want to call it answering to the CAO or answering to, that director is going to have to answer to someone.
Of course.
Okay, so no matter how we look at this and what we name it and call it, whoever runs or how this commission, committee, whatever, agency will have to answer to someone within the city of Albuquerque.
Let me give you an example of something, okay, from the nonprofit world. Because I was a nonprofit executive director, okay? And I was employed by the agency. I reported to a board of directors. So if you think of the citizens as a board of directors, but there's a professional in charge who reports to somebody, that's what you're saying. So I can see it being structured that way. The key thing to think about is if you install a director or an IRO or whoever's in charge of the agency, who do they report to? That's what has to be done carefully. Because if you have it the way it is now and they report to the CAO, it's a conflict of interest with the citizens. Somehow, there should be a way to work it out so that it's structured like a department or an agency or whatever you're calling your other things. But that the reporting structure maybe is back to the city council or something like that.
Go ahead, proceed.
I think we're, and I appreciate your experience in a nonprofit. Think there's a difference between a nonprofit and tax money? Which is what we would be spending on this? And I think that...
A lot!
Basically, all comes from the same people, but I believe in the way it's spent. So I think this is, it sounds, but I think in the long run, we are going to have to answer to someone within the city government. So it can never be totally independent, as long as it's being funded by taxpayer money in the city budget.
I think Stephanie had a comment, and I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Bennett.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Jones, I have an example that might put it into better perspective. Please. The task force, they talked about the idea of their recommendation kind of following our accountability and oversight ordinance, which governs the internal auditor and our inspector general. They, there are some problems with those ordinances as well. So they didn't really go far enough to specifically say that here. But for instance, the internal audit director, she is the head of that department. She answers to the accountability and oversight committee. So she doesn't directly report to either council or the administration. And I think that's maybe an example that they would like it to follow, if I'm not wrong.
Is that a good example?
And if I may, one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
If that, if this person doesn't answer to anyone, and there is malfeasance and/or issues, how is that handled?
And that I don't, I'm sorry, Counsel, I don't have the answer to that question. I think we might have to, you know, investigate, well, just review kind of the structure of maybe the internal auditor and, you know, what recourse somebody would have against malfeasance.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
So the task force did not anticipate, did not use the words IRO?
Right.
In your recommendation.
Would not use that term, no.
And so there would be an executive staff of this board that's under the direction of the board. As far as you tell them to go jump and they jump.
Pretty much.
And the... And the...
Right.
And I'm using the word board. I don't think you use the word board either. Probably intensely not trying to get down to that level of detail. But I'm calling it a board because it needs to be a very responsible group of people who is giving a certain amount of direction to staff or maybe all of the direction to the staff. You know, I'm just trying to formulate this myself in my own mind. And would the board, to use that term, hire the staff?
Yes.
So, and the board, to use that term, would conduct research and analyze and make policy recommendations, but those policy recommendations are to the council?
Right. Correct, yes.
Okay.
The new agency, we'll call it that, it's a board. It's still operated under the authority of city council like it does now. We just wanted to make it as independent as we could because that was one of the big criticisms.
Okay. And obviously, as I understand it anyway, that, I mean, there have been, I guess doubts raised as to whether the current POC even has the authority to conduct research and go to these conferences you were talking about or no?
Well, no, I think the current POC, the current POC members were attending the national conference. But I think that the opinion that was handed down by the city attorney put significant constraints on what your current POC could do and couldn't do. And again, that was one of the problems with it not being independent and why their ability to hire an attorney was put into this. So that they could have their own attorney. Well, we don't agree with that opinion. Here's our opinion. And then, who knows, the city council or the courts or whatever, you get every thought.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Gibson.
Well, I'm not real familiar with what was put forth that would limit or define. But I did look at the original ordinance. And it uses verbs like to promote a spirit, to oversee, review, to submit findings, to engage, long-term planning process. It specifically says the POC will not investigate any complaints. And I just have to question that. Given that type of obligation to this agency or commission, or whatever we're calling it, turning regular, common folks, you know, into investigators? Unless I'm misunderstanding something.
Yeah, no, the agency would employ professional investigators to do the investigations. And they would report their findings to the board.
Okay.
So the board members, citizens, wouldn't be doing the investigations. They would be looking at the result of the investigations. But we are empowering them with the ability to bring in people for additional testimony, et cetera, if they feel they need it.
Yeah, acting is an adjudicating body. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what you mean by that term, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm...
To make assessments, judgments?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Well, I just want to start by saying, you know, thanks to the task force members for working on this and providing these recommendations. I actually wanted to kind of move on to go to under five A. Currently, if my memory serves me correctly, that at the end of the day, it all lies on, on the table of the chief.
Right, of course.
And it seems based off of these recommendations that that's exactly what happens now. So, you know, the, the chief has the final say. Did you put any consideration into, because I think that was kind of part of the issues with all this? So was there any consideration made to have it, there be an appeal process if people are unhappy with what the chief of police decided at the end of the day? Back to the mayor, to council, something?
Well, what we put in to address that, we didn't think that the civilian authority, the civilian board should have authority to discipline officers. But we felt that the civilian authorities should have, be able to at least recommend from the charter of sanctions what they feel the sanction would be. And we're requiring the police chief to report back if those sanctions don't match. So if the sanction is much less than what was recommended, he would need to report back or much more and say why. So, so the citizen has access to what's going to happen to this police officer through the agency and the agency's recommendation on discipline.
Mr. President, but at the end of the day, we could end up with the same result is that, you know, maybe the average citizens don't agree with what the chief decided and he has the final say.
Yeah, we thought that the police chief has to be able to make his own decisions about discipline. We just wanted some public input on it and we wanted an ability to, for lack of a better way to express it, red flag it if, you know, if the civilian body came up with a recommended discipline and the police chief gave, you know, a much less discipline, a slap on the wrist or something that the civilian body thought is much more serious, they'd be in conflict with each other, raise red flag and there'd be discussion about it. I don't know what the remedy would be, whether you have to take that to court or goes to city council or how that gets resolved ultimately.
And I have one question also on goal two number seven. In one of the states here, the civilian police oversight agency should have greater access to civilian complaints, court complaints and internal affairs case data. In some cases, if it's going through internal affairs, I don't think internal affairs is going to release that information to the P O C. Yeah, I would just have a little bit of concern that there could be some legal issues in this particular case when there are things that need to be kept confidential while the investigation is being investigated.
So let me answer it this way. Again, I have to excuse my, I'm not an attorney. But I, I believe that there's sharing of data now between internal affairs and the IRO. I don't know the extent of that sharing or where there are legal concerns. Of course, those legal concerns would take precedent and that material couldn't be shared. But to the degree possible, the more information sharing and the more openness, the better. Because anytime you withhold stuff, people start questioning, well, what are you hiding?
Counselor Vice President Jones, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think Counselor Harris could probably give me some advice on this one, but it seems to me we're kind of on a slippery slope here because there always is recourse for the citizen and that, of course, is the court system. And, and being like you, not an attorney and certainly not sure about this, but it seems that if we start revealing to, again, a citizen committee, citizen agency, multiple people, information that's in internal affairs or something like that, are we interfering or causing any potential issue if this goes to court? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure where we're going with all of this, but it seems that there's, there could be some potential issues on several things here. And I know we want to be transparent, but we also want to protect the rights of everyone involved in this. Just, I, Counselor Harris, I think I'm just going to let you talk about this.
I have some other questions, but yeah, I don't know.
Well, go ahead and see.
Well, there's something that I don't know if people realize under the federal civil rights law, what Congress did is actually give incentive to people to sue for, for police misconduct because attorney fees are mandatory if there's any kind of civil rights violation. And that's why the city often has to settle these civil rights cases because what's happened, we've gone before juries and the jury has awarded a dollar and $300,000 in attorney fees. So I think as, you know, being fiscally responsible for the city, I think we have to be careful to do anything that would actually encourage even more of these lawsuits because the former mayor, Martin Chavas, he actually refused to settle any case. That was a controversial decision at one point. But what it did do is it actually made people think about whether or not this is a good case to bring and not just go for a settlement. So I, I think we do have to be careful about how if we open up this, this information and we're just going to give civil rights attorneys who act, who do pretty well already, more opportunities to file lawsuits when maybe ones aren't warranted. So I have some other concerns about this, but we'll go ahead and talk about that.
I've allocated a total of one hour for the session and we are about at 60 minutes right now. So you want to ask a question real quick? I think...
Was there a minority vote? One of you have any recommendations or...
No, as I said, out of the 18, 15 of them were unanimous. So there were only three that had split votes on them anyway.
Okay, and what were those three?
I'd like to comment on one of those.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of that was not unanimous was the question that Councilwoman Penya asked about if there was some findings and penalties were recommended or disciplinary action was recommended and the chief of police didn't follow up on that recommendation or that discipline. There was a lot of discussion about whether the affected person, person of the victim, had an appeal process to potentially the chief administrative officer or to the mayor's office. So there was a lot of discussion about that and so there was a split vote on whether it should be go, should go beyond the chief of police and go higher than the chief of police. So that was one where there was a lot of discussion and that was not a unanimous vote.
We have a question which is, right now, I learned recently that the Burnley County Sheriff's Department does not have a recruiting problem. They're filled. And when I talked to both people who are high ranking in the Burnley County Sheriff's Department as well as people who are high ranking in the A P D, one of the reasons that is really harms our recruitment are the lapel gangs. If a police officer can go anywhere else in the state, virtually, and not have to have a camera on him, then they'd rather do that. So what I'm concerned about in terms of, we're trying to get up to 1,100 officers and if we have a police oversight process that's going to be more onerous than Burnley County or Rio Rancho or Edgewood or state police, I mean, have you thought about how maybe the county and other cities could buy into something like this? Number one, number two? Yeah, one other, and yeah, I guess that's really it. Like, how can we make this sort of regional? Have you thought about that?
Let me address that.
Sure.
First of all, we weren't charged with looking at it regionally. So no, we did not look at it regionally. But I will say that the challenges facing the Albuquerque Police Department and recruitment are not related to the civilian oversight process. They're related to other things that are happening in the city. And I would further...
No, but I mean, the, the union doesn't agree with this, right?
Union does not want any oversight. I will tell you that the trend nationally is oversight in every city in the western hemisphere.
I was going to do my other question. Is how does, is this, are there models that adopt this that you can show us? I mean, have you...
I'll address that as well. First of all, we gather information from around the country. We're from ours. We also look at the past reports that have been done without your own, the current P O C. And I attended a national conference on this issue. I can tell you that there are no one size fits all. There are different models in different cities. The cultures are different. The practices are different. The police forces are different. So all of these things differ. But the, having civilian oversight is not something that varies. Every city has it and cities that don't have it are looking to put it in place. And there were people there from other countries as well, western hemisphere, but from, you know, South America and places like that at this conference who are also looking to do this. If you go back to the 1800s and you look at when the first civilian police forces were put in place, the very first one was in the city of London. And the first police commissioner was charged with setting up this police force. It was very, very controversial because prior to that, it was only the military.
Counselor Lippman?
Yeah.
You know, we can go into some history on this. I guess time, but we're really limited in time. We've got another group that needs to present to this committee. But let me go to Counselor Winter and Counselor Barham. Those are two sponsors. And then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just, I want to really again thank for the dialogue and the debate. I know you all hashed it out quite a bit and I think every, all the kind of dialogue we're getting is fantastic. I want to talk a little bit about next steps. I, I think that Counselor Gardino and I are going to take what the recommendations from this commission and we're going to try to craft an ordinance. Now, that doesn't mean maybe some other counselors might also take, take the recommendation and craft their own ordinance, but I think that's what the next step's going to happen. And, and so we're going to start working on it and see what we can come up with. I think one thing, what we can all agree on is that there are problems with the current ordinance and the way it's working. And so I think that's, we all can agree on that and let's see if we can make it better.
Great.
Counselor Bennett, then we'll have Counselor Gardino close.
I also want to thank you and it's a tremendous amount of work. And I think it's a pretty darn big product.
Thank you.
So, but I also want to quickly question because you referred to legal limitations and of course, there are legal limitations. The legal limitations, I'm sure, would apply to internal affairs complaints to some extent. I think they would most likely apply, and internal affairs by its nature is a certain form of personnel and resources issue, right? To some extent. Goes beyond, goes well beyond that, given the nature of the work that is being conducted by, by the employees. But then the union contracts. And of course, we know that the recent union contract was not approved by the membership. But what sort of discussion occurred around union contracts? And I'm sorry to extend the meeting a little bit further, but to me, that seemed to be a key question.
A lot, because there were, there were things that the current P O C wanted to do that were in conflict with the current union contract. And in fact, when, as we were reaching the final stages of our internal negotiations and starting to produce the recommendations, we wrote a letter to the city council asking you all to contact the mayor and ask the mayor to withhold, not, not the pay raises and all of that, but withhold those portions of the union contract that were going to interface with civilian oversight until after we issued our recommendations and hopefully after you guys craft an ordinance. So that they're not in conflict. Because going forward, I suspect if they're in conflict, it's going to have to be something at least settled by the courts. And the court will decide which rules, city ordinance or union contract.
Thank you.
And real quickly, before we close with Counselor Gardino, I want to thank Dr. Proman for his work and our staff in working with the task force. Counselor Gardino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to thank everyone. It was really arduous and a lot of sniping from outside that you folks withstood. So thank you for kind of putting on blinders and doing the work you did. That said, there's still a lot of questions that I have, like the constitution of the agency, if that's what it's going to be called, who's going to choose the members. I mean, some of those things are in here as recommendations that some might not agree with. So those are things that we're going to have to, as Counselor Leonard says, we'll have to craft into an ordinance. And it may be very different from what we see here.
That's up to you.
And you won't recognize some of the things. But there are some things that we as elected officials know I owe some credence to and I want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to fire me if they don't like what I'm doing. But if we set up an insular committee, commission, agency that's once or twice removed from the public because now we have, in this situation, we have now a board of five choosing the members, you know, pretty soon you won't recognize the end product. You won't even know who they are. And I want to make sure that, as I say, I allow the public to weigh in on what kind of work we're doing or the folks that we appoint. So that's one of the issues that I have that I'm sure we'll discuss. But again, I know now we're starting to discuss this and big, really important issue.
I'm happy to come back.
Well, and that may be something that we entertain. I don't know. It's up to, to the, you know, counsel.
But we'll tell you, we gave a lot of thought for that. The, the who does the selecting and who serves is a very big deal.
And it is, it is for me.
It was for us as well. And it's a hard thing to work out, to make sure that it's seen as fair and independent.
And I give you clues to where I stand, so.
Yes, you did, and I think that was a good idea.
Chairman Lippman, committee members, thank you for your time and your dedication and you took this job very seriously and we really appreciate your recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.